And call the city council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
President.
Whitman.
President.
Stillgrave.
Here.
Vining.
Here.
Jermaine.
Here.
Lemoore.
President.
Mayor Clark.
And President, ask that we all please rise for the invocation. Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Guide us in our deliberations and discussions this evening. May our efforts promote the good of the residents of this city and all who visit.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, first item, please.
The first item on the agenda is approval of regular agenda.
Before we take a motion there, I know that we had conversation on our work session, also the correspondence from the city manager regarding an item on the agenda to be removed. And I'll just see if there's a Councilwoman Lemoore.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to remove the closed executive session.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilman Felder, to amend the agenda to remove the item, close the executive session at the conclusion of this meeting. Comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda, and for item B, approval of payments to vendors, the amount should read $1,689,682.86. 1-689-682.86.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Items on the consent agenda from council. Seeing none, are there any items on the consent agenda that was present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Items on the consent agenda. Seeing none, motion would be in order. Councilman Felder?
I'd make a motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Lemoore, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, and carried out. I'm sorry. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
Yes.
Whitman. Stillgrave. Vining. Jermaine. Lemoore. Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item. And call the city council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
President.
Whitman.
President.
Stillgrave.
Here.
Here.
Jermaine.
Here.
Lemoore.
President.
Mayor Clark.
And President, ask that we all please rise for the invocation. Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Guide us in our deliberations and discussions this evening. May our efforts promote the good of the residents of this city and all who visit.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, first item, please.
The first item on the agenda is approval of regular agenda.
Before we take a motion there, I know that we had conversation on our work session, also the correspondence from the city manager regarding an item on the agenda to be removed. And I'll just see if there's a Councilwoman Lemoore.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to remove the closed executive session.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilman Felder, to amend the agenda to remove the item, close the executive session at the conclusion of this meeting. Comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda, and for item B, approval of payments to vendors, the amount should read $1,689,682.86. 1-689-682.86.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Items on the consent agenda from council. Seeing none, are there any items on the consent agenda that was present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Items on the consent agenda. Seeing none, motion would be in order. Councilman Felder?
I'd make a motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Lemoore, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, and carried out. I'm sorry. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
Yes.
Whitman. Stillgrave. Vining. Jermaine. Lemoore. Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item.
The next item on the agenda is under Presentations, Communications, and Public Hearings. It's item 3552, CDBG Annual Action Plan 2022 through 2023. This is the public hearing for that, and the item was published according to all necessary.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's okay. I was rambling.
No, you weren't. I was.
But it was published.
It was published. Thank you.
It was published.
Which is required. Director Tolsted, any comments or start with?
Yes, Your Honor. Mark Cochran, economic community development director, has a few comments and introductions.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Real quickly, tonight is just the first public hearing to receive public comment on the CDBG action plan that we presented to the city council at the work session on May 16th. And so after tonight's public hearing, we also need to schedule a final public hearing, which is recommended for July 18th, for the July 18th city council meeting.
Thank you. So at this time.
And there are no comments on file for this in the clerk's office.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing regarding item 3552, the community development block grant annual action plan 2022-23, this public hearing. Any comments from those present here this evening for this first public hearing for the CDBG annual action plan? Seeing no comments, I'll close the public hearing. Just going to make a comment here before we move forward, because as the clerk tonight discussed, and she pointed out that when you read this, it's recommended, obviously, after the public hearing, that the council schedule a final public hearing on the annual action plan and adopt the proposed plans at the July 18th, 2022. So we do need a motion to establish the next, or the final public hearing, which should be on the date of July 11th prior to action. Clerk?
That's what it appears to me, but I'm open to clarification if it's not necessary.
And I did speak with Mr. Pasto, the city manager. He said there should be, if we don't do it, then we have to publicize. We have to still have to, there should be a motion to set this. So I'm looking at the city council for a motion to set the final public hearing.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we set the final public hearing for the CDBG Annual Action Plan 2022-23 public hearing for July 18th, 2022.
Motion by Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Jermaine, that schedule a final public hearing for the CDBG Annual Action Plan be set for July 18th, 2022. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
Yes.
Whitman. Stillgrave. Vining. Jermaine. Lemoore. Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item?
The next item is under council action. It's item 3579, Proposed Ordinance 22-003, Mobile Retail Ordinance up for its first reading.
Thank you. I know that Director Tolsted, I know that yourself, Clerk Treasurer Lavoy, was spearheading this retail, mobile retail ordinance. I don't know if there's any comments or introductions.
Just an introduction, Your Honor. City Attorney Matt Buzz will introduce the ordinance, and Clerk Lavoy will be available for questions.
Your Honor and council, what you have before you is proposed ordinance to modify what we're now going to refer to, if passed, as the mobile retail of the code of the city of Monroe. The mobile retail ordinance that's before you is designed to implement what we have talked about at past work sessions, with a focus, I will say, on simplifying, reorganizing, and hopefully making a bit more user-friendly, the mobile retail, which is now designed to encompass both food trucks and mobile food vending units, hawkers, peddlers, and transient merchants, and ice cream sales vehicles, all of which had their own separate ordinance section previously. And the idea is to set out one permitting process, one application fee process, and general rules that would apply across the board for those various activities. As you went through and reviewed, you would note that there are some things that, you know, certainly apply to different of those categories in different ways, but we tried to accomplish a circumstance where we, as much as we could streamline those, put them into one place. So it's, I'll say, sort of one-stop shopping for those looking to do what we're going to refer to as mobile retail, so that they're not looking at different places, or trying to decide, are they a transient merchant, or are they an ice cream sales, or are they a food truck, those type of items. So what's before you is designed to do those items, and then to repeal each of the separate sections that apply to each of those under the current code. And I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns. Largely, the idea was to come up with, and it'll be before the council by resolution, if passed, a lower application fee to try to encourage events that food trucks would be at, and largely to allow them, if they're operating with the permission of a private property owner, as long as they operate within certain rules and regulations, or to operate as part of a special event or through a permit through the city if they're going to be operating on the public streets. And happy to answer any other questions or concerns.
Is there any questions from Mr. Buzz, or Clerk Lavoy, or first to chefs, if there's any additional? I know that you've worked on this very diligently.
Thank you. No, I don't, I think Attorney Buzz took care of all of the reasoning behind it. It's going to prove to make it much easier, and I think it's also going to allow for a certain level of fairness that may not currently exist because the different policies are so scattered. So you have an ice cream vendor who may be paying more, or may be paying less than a food truck that's classified as a food truck but still serves ice cream. So it's going to be a good way to make it fair for everyone, so.
So today's action item is about setting the, for the first reading, and set the public hearing on the date it says in the action item, but I'll just entertain if there's any questions or comments. If not, a motion would be in order. Councilman Lemoore?
Yes, Your Honor. I make a motion that proposed ordinance 22-003, an ordinance to adopt Chapter 436 Mobile Retail of the Code of the City of Monroe, be placed on the floor for its first reading, and set the public hearing and second reading on June 20th, 2022.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave, on item 3579, Proposed Ordinance 2022-003, and setting the hearing, the first reading, setting the public meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
Yes.
Whitman. Stillgrave. Vining. Jermaine. Lemoore. Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Ordinance 22-003, an ordinance to adopt Chapter 436 Mobile Retail of the Code of the City of Monroe, to repeal Chapter 360, food trucks, mobile food vending units, to repeal Chapter 374, hawkers, peddlers, and transient merchants, and to repeal Chapter 396, ice cream sales vehicles.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is item 3578, Port of Monroe American Recovery Act Plan Appropriation.
Director Tolsted?
Again, I'd like to introduce Mark Cochran, economic community development director, who has a few comments regarding this concern of this.
Good evening again, Mayor, City Council. This item is a request to support a project at the Port of Monroe using the city's American Recovery Plan Act funding, which we received this year and last year. But the port is seeking the assistance for $1.7 million out of the ARPA funds for the purpose of installing and establishing cargo inspection operations for, including facility and equipment. As many of us know, and has been highlighted a lot in the regional, local, as well as national press, the many challenges that the port has had in attracting international cargo to the port. And so through the hard work and diligence of Port of Monroe Director Paul Lamar, we've been able to secure support through the Customs and Border Protection to begin having CBP services offered at the port for the purpose of international cargo. The $1.7 million will be used to leverage an additional $5 million in federal funding through a federal grant, as well as a half million annually in maintenance funds from the federal government for the facility. And so these funds will be used to adaptively reuse one of the buildings at the port that's near the new dock that was installed a couple years ago for the purpose of cargo screening. So the funds would be used for the completion of engineering design work utilities, as well as rehabbing the facility for the reuse, perimeter fencing, lighting, access control, and security measures for the CBP facility. And so as this would work, we'd be able to attract a lot more automotive container business at the port for incoming and outgoing automotive cargo from the port, as well as things like the steel coil and wind turbines and other product coming in via cargo container at the Port of Monroe. So think of it as giant X-ray facilities that the federal government would come in and screen and approve before it goes out. So we are also making a request tomorrow night for the county, to the county, for a portion of their ARPA funds as well to support this project.
Any questions for Mr. Cochran?
It's 1.7 million from this, it'll be the same amount at the county.
Thank you. Councilman Felder?
Thank you, Your Honor. So we are, two questions here. First of all, we are leveraging the 1.7 million we're putting up, asking the county to match that. CBP is going to put in a half a million dollars a year to maintain its facility, is that my understanding?
As well as another $5 million for the installation and equipment.
And that's all going to the CBP to screen the cargo as it comes in once we meet their qualifications. I know this has been a long-term battle.
Yep, correct.
Yeah. Good. That's awesome. So the second question is, I absolutely believe that, set aside the money that we're going to, the $6.7 million that we're going to receive from outside funding for our city and our infrastructure and our port, we're going to pay for our portion by itself, just with the economic impact that the port is going to have by its additional cargo screening, the additional business it's going to be able to do, and then the economic impact on the area in the port and the businesses that are there, just over time. Do we have any methodology to gauge that over time?
Yeah. So looking at the increase in cargo, and there was a report, a white page that was attached, developed by Paul Lamar, attached to the council agenda item tonight with anticipated projections of the amount of increased cargo that's going to come into the port. I don't have the dollar amounts to that right off the top of my head, because the port does charge a tariff for everything that comes across the dock, which gets reinvested back into the port and back into the infrastructure. And I know we did have a report by the University of Michigan that was done on the financial impact of the port to local economy. I just don't have that off the top of my head.
That's fair. Well, thank you, Mark, so much, and thank you, Brian, for serving as liaison to the port committee for us.
My pleasure.
Looking for something. But there is that attached form, and I think it does, it is a real good, very brief synopsis, so I'll just say the return and the expectations from the investment being made. You know, we say there are expenditures, but there's also things called investments. An investment means, you know, that it's going to be, both on the economic side, but a community development side benefit. And more produce coming through at the port means more development here. So with that, if there's no other questions, aside item 3578. Councilwoman Lemoore?
Yes, I'll make a motion to appropriate $1.7 million of ARPA funding to the Port of Monroe for their cargo inspection project conditioned upon following all applicable provisions of the uniform guidance found in 2 CFR Part 200 that apply to ARPA funds, including federal procurement guidelines and regulations.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilman Felder, on item 3578, Port of Monroe, the ARPA appropriation of $1.7 million. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
Yes.
Whitman. Stillgrave. Vining. Jermaine. Lemoore. Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is item 3574, DTE Agreement for Pole Relocation Huber Drive Extension.
Director Tolsted, introduction on this, and I see Mark's moving as well.
Yes, Your Honor. You're going to see a theme throughout the night. Mark Cochran has a few comments concerning this item.
Hello, Ken. This item is related to the redevelopment of the Lazy Boy Headquarters site. This morning, we opened the bids and received two bids for the Phase Two infrastructure at the Lazy Boy site, which includes extending Holiday Drive to Huber, and then Huber Drive out to Greenfield, and eventually Stewart Road, as well as some underground infrastructure work, including a retention pond to manage the stormwater on much of the site. Part of including the extension of Huber Drive includes going over Mason Run and installing a new culvert. And in order to do that, we need to relocate two of DTE's poles. And so that's what the agreement is tonight with DTE, to relocate those two poles a little further away from the drain, away from the culvert, where Huber is going to be extended out to Greenfield. And I will say, congratulations to city engineer Patrick Lewis. We opened those bids this morning. Those will be on the next city council agenda item, but they did come in about $250,000 under the engineer's estimate, so.
Wonderful. Any questions for Mr. Cochran? If not, then we have this item, the DTE Agreement for the Pole Relocation on Huber Drive Extension. As we know, Councilman Stillgrave, go ahead. Okay, good.
Move that the attached agreement with DTE be approved in the amount of $44,837.94, that the Director of Engineering and Public Services be authorized to execute it on behalf of the city, and that the Director of Finance be authorized to make any necessary budget amendments.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Stillgrave, supported by Councilwoman Lemoore, 3574, DTE Agreement for Pole Relocation on the Huber Drive Extension. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Stillgrave. Vining.
Jermaine. Lemoore. Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Director Tolsted, I'm sorry, Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 3573, the 2022 Sidewalk Replacement Program Change Order Award.
Thank you. Director Tolsted?
Yes, Your Honor. This item is to move that city council award a change order for the 2022 Sidewalk Replacement Program to GV Cement Contracting Company for an amount of $197,000. That the council authorize an additional $5,603 from the water fund for the fiscal year 2122 work. That the council authorize an additional $7,181 from the capital fund to be billed to the County of Monroe. That the Director of Engineering and Public Services be authorized to sign the change order on behalf of the city, and that the Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, make any necessary transfers and allocate costs to the correct fiscal year.
Thank you. Before I take a motion, as we know from our work session, and of course, our comment from the city manager, if there's questions from council regarding this particular item, we know that Mr. Lewis will not be able to be with us this evening, our engineer, but if there's specific questions that he may have that question this item, he'd ask that it be pulled so he could be here to answer them. If council is comfortable and confident, had previous conversations on this topic, plus the information provided, then a motion to support or to approve would also be appropriate. I'll entertain a motion. Councilwoman Lemoore?
Yes, I'll make a motion that the city council award a change order for the 2022 Sidewalk Replacement Program to GV Cement Contracting Company Incorporated for a total amount of $197,000. That the council authorize an additional $5,603 from the water fund for fiscal year 2122 work. That the council authorize an additional $7,181 from the Capital Projects Fund to be billed to the County of Monroe. That the Director of Engineering and Public Services be authorized to sign the change order on behalf of the city, and that the Assistant City Manager/Finance Director to make any necessary transfers and to allocate costs to the correct fiscal year.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Felder, on item 3573, the 2022 Sidewalk Replacement Program Change Order Award. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder. Whitman. Stillgrave. Vining. Jermaine. Lemoore. Mayor Clark.
Yes. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 3575, Former Eastside Fire Station Parking Lot Reconstruction Change Order.
Director Tolsted?
Yes, Your Honor. This is also a change order. Again, this is a move that the city council award a change order for the parking lot reconstruction at 1330 East First Street to the 2022 Concrete Pavilion Program to GV Cement Contracting Company for a total amount, including contingencies of $25,000. That the Director of Engineering and Public Services be authorized to sign the change order on behalf of the city, and that the Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, make any necessary transfers, including from Capital Projects Fund reserves, and to allocate costs to the correct fiscal year.
Thank you. This is also a council action item, and as stated, this is through the Engineering Department. Mr. Lewis cannot be present this evening. And speaking with the city manager, if there were, if there's concerns regarding this topic and need further information from Mr. Lewis, he'd ask that we postpone this item. However, if council is confident and comfortable with having read the fact sheet information, and this being a new item at our former fire station, it is now the Monroe Community Ambulance Site. It's a small project that is about the parking lot that needs to be refurbished and is deteriorated beyond use. So if there's no, at this time, I'll take a motion from council members regarding this item, which way you wish to go. Councilwoman Lemoore?
Yes, Your Honor. I'll make a motion that the city council award a change order for the parking lot reconstruction at 1330 East First Street for the 2022 Concrete Paving Program to GV Cement Contracting Company Incorporated for a total amount, including contingencies of $25,000. That the Director of Engineering and Public Services be authorized to sign the change order on behalf of the city, and that the Assistant City Manager/Finance Director make any necessary transfers, including from Capital Projects Fund reserves, and to allocate costs to the current correct fiscal year.
Motion by Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave, on item 3575, the change order regarding the parking lot reconstruction. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
Yes.
Whitman. Stillgrave. Vining. Jermaine. Lemoore. Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 3576, Architectural Engineering Services for 201 West Front Street, a change order.
Director Tolsted?
Yes, Your Honor. I think for the last time tonight, Economic Community Development Director Mark Cochran with a few comments.
And certainly, last but not least, in December of 2021, city council had awarded an agreement with Synectica Key Architects to develop the architectural plans for the former Whistlestop Bar that the city had purchased earlier that year. Just by way of an update to city council as well, we've been working with Synectica Key over the past few weeks, or few months, I'm sorry, to develop a site plan for the site and determine what it's going to take to white box a site and transform it for redevelopment to occur. We've got a draft site plan completed that's in the process of being reviewed by the Historic District Commission, and planning on sending that to the Planning Commission in the coming months, two months or so. But this change order tonight is for the design of the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems for the redevelopment of the building. This is just to develop the design of the building, and then, once we have the design completed, we'll be able to shop it out with contractors and get a cost estimate to bring to council to prepare the work for a new business to go in. So just a change order for $8,750 for that engineering work.
Any questions from council from Mr., oh, let's see, there's a couple from Mr. Cochran. I'll start at the end. Councilwoman Stillgrave?
That's why I didn't put it in the title of the motion. It's Synectica Key. Synecta Key.
I just wrote that out, too.
It took me months to figure it out, too.
Councilwoman Vining?
Yes, sir. At what point will council be able to see some of these design plans?
After we get the feedback from the Historic District Commission, I think we'll be ready to bring it back. We want to make sure that they've had a chance to review the site plan and get their feedback.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stillgrave, any further? If you would, please.
I move to authorize a change order with Synectica Key, and in the amount to not exceed $8,750, and authorize Economic Community Development Director to execute the necessary contractual.
to execute the necessary contractual documents on behalf of the city.
So, motion by Councilwoman Stillgrave, supported by Councilwoman Germani on item 3576, Change Order for the Architectural Engineering Services at 201 West Front Street. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
I have no further items, Your Honor.
As we go to council comments, I'll say the last item, that's Councilwoman Stillgrave. The biggest challenge to that was getting the company's Synecdoche correct. So, with that, this is now June, six month. Councilwoman Felder, first, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Oh, there are so many good events that have happened so recently. Chief among them is the city's Length of Service Awards Dinner at the Battlefield Education Center. Congratulations to everyone reaching an anniversary this year, especially those who are retiring. Thank you so much for your service in long years to the city. I was also lucky enough to be at Monroe Public Schools' Length of Service Recognition Event out at Leroy's Hall, and that was a wonderful event as well. My mother is retiring from there, so congratulations to her and all of her colleagues who are lucky to be done this year. We also had Cultivate Community this past weekend. We had so many great teams participate and did a lot of work in the community, and I just, I want to say a huge thank you to Director Lewis, I know he's not here this evening, and to all the DPS staff that helped make that possible. I don't think I could go 10 minutes at a time without getting a compliment on behalf of the city services that have been done for the event and put on. They were phenomenal. So, thank you to the employees of the city who worked so hard to make that possible. So, that's all I have this evening, Your Honor, thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Whitman, comments this evening?
I guess I am really grateful for being able to hear the music in the park and, you know, the court dancing and people having fun again. You know, I look forward to that. And I've enjoyed, you know, listening to it. And I am very proud of the city. Proud of, not just the city council, but the other employees that we have and the celebration that we have enjoyed.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stillgrave?
I also want to congratulate all the employees that were given awards for the years that they were there. It was a very nice luncheon, and it was great to see everybody that was in the park this past week, and I hope we all get to enjoy this beautiful weather. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vining?
Yes, Your Honor. Yeah, it was good to see the Cultivate Community cruise around the neighborhood and other parts of the city Saturday, so that was exciting. And since we won't meet again before the Juneteenth holiday, I just wanted to give everyone a reminder of the Juneteenth Family Reunion Celebration, which will be at Montague Park on June 19th, 624 Elmira Street. So, they'll be fun for the entire family, from the kiddies all the way up to the elders. So, everybody come out, bring your family. There'll be live music and a community talent show that begins at 4:00 p.m. So, it'll be a lot of fun there. Also, the Opportunity Center is hosting a Juneteenth celebration the day prior, which is June 18th. I believe that's from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. in Labor Park. They'll also have live music and fun for the family. I wanted to talk a little bit about the, we talked about the naming policy earlier. I want to talk a bit about the, on July 3rd, the family of Rance Allen had the celebration also at Montague Park, 624 Elmira. And I know their original request was that they wanted to rename the street. Okay, so we see our policy watched out that we won't be renaming streets. So, one thing I would like to request is that we, as a council...
I'm sorry.
That's it.
I'd like to request that we, as a council, be in a city, be able to do something, present something for the, to the family. And excuse me, we, you know, the mayor and I have spoken about this, but we haven't exactly worked out what that thing should be. But tonight, I'd like to request that the council present a resolution to the family or that we consider making July 3rd, Rance Allen Day, some recognition in the city. Of course, a little background, every, a lot of people know the Rance Allen Group is an internationally acclaimed, Grammy Award-winning gospel music group, and they were born and raised here in Monroe, Michigan. And, of course, the leader of the group, Rance, used to run the MCOP program and had a church here and was just really active in the community for many years. They headlined the Floral City Festival here in the '70s and '80s, I believe. But I've talked about it so much, I won't go over it all again, but I was hoping that, and I don't know the process, so I'll need some help from the attorney or the mayor here of how to go about requesting that sort of thing, like making it Rance Allen Day, and also presenting some type of resolution to the family on the day of the festival that they're having, which is July 3rd, 2022.
So, I know you may have some additional comments, so just make a comment here because those that may not have been at the work session prior to this, one of the topics on our work session, in our work session, we have discussion, but we don't have decision-making. Decision-making comes to the formal meeting. That's not an item that's on the agenda for tonight, but it's something that may appear at our next meeting, and that would be prior to that July 3rd. So, I think the opportunity is for council is to provide, maybe some input through the administration. Councilwoman Vining is looking to have a resolution or maybe a proclamation, something that identifies the family and the celebration they're having for an item that I would say most in our community know the Rance Allen Group. There are some that may not, but yet that's one of the points, is to elevate that voice and elevate that discussion of the important contribution not only made to the community and to the neighborhood where they grew up, but through their life and from a state, national, and even international impact. And yet continue to speak of their hometown of Monroe and what that was. And, of course, Mr. Allen has passed away now, and that ties to this discussion earlier about our naming policy. We didn't have a policy, and we don't have one still. But we did have the discussion at our work session earlier today about how do we go about putting a process in place, a policy, that we would recognize maybe the naming within a public right-of-way or a public item after a person. So, we've started that process. We may get there in time on that naming policy for something in relation to the ask that we have in a letter form at this point, but it doesn't negate the opportunity for council and the consideration for what Councilwoman Vining is bringing forward of a recognition for their Rance Allen and Rance Allen Group and their contributions over the many decades here in our community. So, I think by announcing that here at this meeting, what you're looking for, it gives the council opportunities to weigh in, and I'll, something that we can refer to at the next meeting. Okay? You have other comments?
That's it.
That's it? Okay. Councilwoman Germani?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to congratulate all of the high school graduates, or a lot of graduations this last weekend and the weekend before that. And a lot of great memories for all those kids. And I'm looking forward to all of the concerts in the park and all the activity downtown this summer, and hopefully great weather. That's all, Your Honor, thank you.
Councilwoman Lomore?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll snag that one right off of Councilwoman Germani there. Congrats to all of our grads in the city. Wonderful job in graduating this year. I'd also like to apologize for not being present at the annual employee luncheon. I had a last-minute obligation that took me out of town, and I could not be there. So, I apologize for not being there, but I really, I think if I would have said anything, it would have been, thank you to the employees for their hard work and diligence and making our city a better city to live in. So, thank you to all those employees that work hard and diligently to make us look good here, up top here, so, thank you. Also, want to remind our residents that it's that time of year where you could be mowing once, twice, maybe three, maybe even four times a week. And it's very apparent to those that don't mow even once a week. So, all I ask is that you take your neighbors into consideration. When you don't mow, it looks, it's a poor reflection upon the neighborhood and the residents there, and they, and I've been out to different houses. I've gone through the city, I've seen the different houses that need the work. All I ask is that you do your best to keep your lawn up in shape because it is a poor reflection upon our city, it's a poor reflection upon your neighborhood, and that's not what we want in the city. And we don't want to take further action here at the city level, but I will be the first one, the first proponent to make sure that it happens if it's necessary. So, please, 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 take care of your yard, your house, and make sure that you keep it neat and tidy in an orderly fashion. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, I have a couple, a few items here, a couple announcements, a couple recognitions, and also a couple opportunities for the community. If you haven't heard already, there's really much that goes on within our community, and sometimes it just may not be your liking, so you don't understand or don't recognize what is going on. First thing I want to congratulate, a member that's worked throughout our community and has done so much, but is retiring here soon. I won't have this opportunity at another meeting before her day comes up. But Connie Carroll, who is the Director of the United Way here from Monroe-Linolee Counties, is retiring. And she, they're having a little celebration after 25 years of service. They're going to have a gathering on June 14th. But many people here in our community know Connie, and while they, I know that her event may have been through invitation, doesn't mean you cannot invite yourself to at least call her and provide her a great thanks for all the work she has done. You talked about some of the items that were talked here at the meeting tonight, the Cultivate Community. Yes, it's the labor organizations and that, and they get support and funding in the community that supports it, and all the volunteers, but, you know, Connie Carroll's behind this as well. And the list is long, I'm not going to even start to try to list that because I will not get through even a third, probably, of all the work that she's done. A great lady, a great ambassador for our community, and a great leader for all the work that she's done. And I just want to say thanks personally to Connie. So, if you do have the opportunity, please call her, text her, write her, see her, go knock on her door, you have until June 14th, to do that. So, thank you, Connie, for all the great work. I know she's attended our meetings from time to time and given us, given credit for, as things develop in our community. Recognition, I want to thank the city staff. I think that our engineering, our DPS, the Building Department, it goes in line with Councilwoman Lomore's comment. We had some significant items that required a lot of work regarding around blatant abatement. And I look here also, from the clerk's office recording things, to our city attorney and his involvement to get to where we are, and Director Tolstead, in the end, when it has to be enforced. We always look for people to, as Councilwoman Lomore said, we want to be, we're looking for you to comply with what the ordinance ours and how we can do this together and how we can assist or help. But we don't get that, then comes the context and its enforcement, and try to bring people along, but sometimes that doesn't even work, and we find ourselves in a court process. We had a couple of those recently, and it was a significant undertaking and for a variety of reasons that required action by the city staff. I want to thank them not only for taking care of the items that were before, and it does have an impact on our entire community, but I also want to thank them for the professionalism which they went about doing their work. I know that our Economic Community Development Director, Mr. Cochran, was also involved in some of those conversations and some that have been followed up from that. So, a big thanks for following through with the council's policy and the fashion in which we do that, to make sure we not only just get results, but we go about that in a professional manner. Next is also recognition I have for the city staff, and it's within the Recreation Department, and specifically Brad Wiley referenced the Munson Park and the youth fields, and now that we have our relationship with the YMCA and the youth ballfields. I want to thank Mr. Cochran for sending along an email to us in that he had contacted and received the correspondence from the CEO of the YMCA, Kristin Irwin, and talking about how immaculate the condition in which the park and the youth ballfields were, but also not only that, just the sidewalks and the ability to get there. Was pleased to see that those that might have had some ADA compliance needs, that there was sidewalks, not gravel, rocks in the pathway for them to get there. And as she put it, she said, "It's awesome." So, I always like that when I see that, tells me things are going well, but that's because of the staff and the great employees that we have. Couple opportunities coming up, while they fall on the same day, doesn't mean you can't still try to attend them. The, as we talked at our work session a little bit, there was a presentation. We kept referring to the PEL, which is the Planning and Environmental Link Study. That's pertaining to I-75 and the exit ramps at Front Street and Elm Avenue. And working with MDOT and the Long-Term Plan, and Mr. Cochran's well involved with this, and is, you know, as we look to see how that entire intersection exits are reconfigured, and it also is going to lend into the refurbishment of the bridge that goes over the River Raisin. But there's a kind of a public hearing, they said they want to hear from us. So, if the opportunity presents itself, I'd ask those that are present, those that may be listening, look for the announcements and the postings. It's on Wednesday, June 8th, just a couple days away, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's going to be held at the Opportunity Center at ALCC. You may not have a comment or a voice or just don't really know. It's a great opportunity to come and learn about what that is, what the process is, and the transformation that's going to make in those terrible exits that are at that, those two ramps that are just hazardous, and how that's going to be removed, how we bring community, not our residents in and out of our community when they depart and come back, but also those that are visiting here, and what that's going to look like. So, equally, on the same night, though, so you can be quick in attending both or pick which one you find that you want to have the better voice at, our Trails Committee, which was established here, is having an input session the same evening. It just happened to how it came to be. And it's, that's also at 6:00 o'clock. It's going to be here at City Hall in the third floor, in the conference room. So, if you can come to one and make your comments known about you, you'd like to see in the development of trails through our community, those non-motorized opportunities to extend, not only through our community, but extending out to the state park, but also out to the county as we go west with the County Link Plan that was reported here this past week. Opportunity put in there, say what you'd like to see and what your needs are. I think they're both are well worth the opportunity to attend. One is maybe learning, but the other's more, a little more input because you can just do the stickers and put your thoughts on there, and then the Trails Committee is moving it together, I think, rapidly in their thought process, but it still takes time, and some of the funding that they're resourcing or attempting to locate for is a resource. I think the last comment has already been made about concerts in the park. It's great to have them back, but I want to let everybody know that this Thursday at 7:00 p.m., the concert in the park will continue at St. Marie's Park here in the downtown. So, hopefully you have an opportunity. One last comment that wasn't on my list to begin with, we have a Boy Scout here this evening. I just want to say welcome. He said he didn't really want to speak, but I at least have to hear his troop number. Which, what is your troop number that you're from? 560, 566. So, the scout is here this evening because he has his citizens' community activity to listen. As you think about that, I know you probably have the agenda. There's a lot of things up front seem to go rather rapidly, and if you have some questions, I'd be glad to answer that, or the council, or even the clerk. You know, what is a consent agenda? Why do you get things passed altogether, and as we do presentations and votes? And at the end is obviously the opportunity for council to make comments. We also have a last opportunity, even yourself, if you wish to come up and speak, is through the citizens' comments, but I don't think I'll conclude there. Just want to say thank you for being here, I wish you well on your ventures in scouting, but also your working towards your merit badges, and hopefully it'll be an equal scout for you here soon one day. It'd be wonderful, and I hope you come back to see us if you do, okay? Clerk Trezor LaVoy?
I have no comments. Most of what I would have covered was already taken care of, which is great. A lot of really great people doing a lot of really great things, so.
A lot of really great people doing a lot of really great things, so it's good that they were recognized. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. So, next is usually the city manager's comments, but seeing manager is unable to be here this evening, and as I said, I think at the work session, our, our assistant, the city manager is actually trained. So, as you follow through our charter, it's our, our, our Public Safety Director is also is the Chief of Police is the next. Chief Tolstedt, any comments? How's that seat?
The seat is, uh, seat is big. I do not have any comments, but I would defer to my go-to guy, Mark Cochran, tonight.
Yeah, and Mr. Cochran is also assistant to the city manager, does many of the things in hand with events, but I know also want to give, uh, Mark, I'm glad you said it, because I want to give Mark a chance and opportunity to make any comments tonight, too.
Yep, I, I appreciate that, Mayor. I was going to mention the P E L process, so I'm glad that you brought that up with MDOT, but there is one more opportunity for the residents to have their voices heard. As council knows, we're working on the Orchard East Master Plan Update for the neighborhood right now, and part of the phase that we're in right now, we just finished some stakeholder interviews with, I appreciate Councilwoman Vining and Councilman Felder helping us identify some of the neighborhood leaders and influencers that we need to have some discussions with, but we're moving into the public comment period now with that project. And so, Councilwoman Vining mentioned the Juneteenth Celebration at the Opportunity Center on June eighteenth from twelve to six, and O H M Advisors, who we're working with on the neighborhood suburb area plan, is going to be there with the table set up, and we're going to have some surveys where we'd like to hear from residents and other folks from the neighborhood as we develop the master plan in a, in a partnership with the neighborhood, not just the city and administrative staff and council developing the vision, but wanting to hear from the neighbors. And so, O H M will be there with the table set up, they're going to have some handouts, but if you can't make it to that event, we're also going to have the survey online, and we'll be promoting that on the city's website and social media channels and flyers throughout the neighborhood as well with a Q R code. That'll be open, I believe, through the first week of July. Folks will be able to take that online, but we'll also have the print survey at the Juneteenth Celebration on June eighteenth. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. So, next on the agenda is citizens' comments, and I just, as we always do, is kind of the rules of the chamber, so we know that the citizens' comments, we have the opportunity for those here present this evening to make comments. We ask that you just state your name, your jurisdiction or residence, but also jurisdiction of residence, and let you know that three minutes is the time that we look at, but if there's any comments, I'll take comments from those present here this evening at this time. Are there any comments? I see Mr. Peroni's here, our supervisor from Bedford Township, and I, I might know why he's here, so I'll caution, I know he's active in his position as he currently is, and also is, uh, running for an office, and we try to re, refrain from a lot of that conversation, but you're welcome to introduce yourself and say as you wish, and we'll go from there. Thanks, Mr.
Kelly, I also had an opportunity to, uh, work at Cultivate Community this weekend and had a great time, had a chance to meet and talk with William Parker for a while. A lot of great people, and it's a lot of fun, so I did...
Paul doesn't have to say his name, because it's right on his shirt there, it says Bedford Township Supervisor.
Yeah.
Mr. Peroni.
Go ahead. But, uh, yes, I am Paul Peroni. I live at sixty-four oh-six Cheltenham Drive in Temperance, and I've been a resident of Bedford my whole life, and I have five children, and my wife, Stephanie, been married to for fifteen years. And I've been involved locally in government for fourteen years now, from Park Commissioner to trustee, and my second term as supervisor, and I feel a strong desire that we need to continue to have strong leadership in Lansing, and I personally feel how it's very important to have the local government experience to represent the communities in Lansing. You all know there's so much that goes on, and there's so much that you know and learn that you could take to Lansing and make real change. You know, why we lose a business to Toledo, or why dealing with some times with MDOT with a grant is difficult. You know, I've dealt with all those things over the years. I would ask, you know...
We don't campaign bargain, so to speak, but I understand that you're here for, because you are seeking an office that impacts our community, so I'll say I appreciate you being here, let's be known. I, I know that you have been in town here, and not just today, and other days, and the opportunities that you have with to get engaged with the community, so...
No, for sure. It's a, it's a pleasure, and thank you for having me.
Thanks, and I know I'll see you through the weeks, and I, and at the chamber event coming up, too, so...
Sure.
Thank you. Other comments from those present here this evening? Any comments from any of those present? So, we not, we don't have the closed session, which was removed, so with that, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. From Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilman Felder, to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Whitman? Stelgrave? Vining? Germani? Lamore? Mayor Clark?
Yes.